All right, good morning. I would like to call for order our November 4th State Pro City Council meeting. And in doing so, I would like to ask Councilman Phil Boyham to give us an invocation and to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please do. Dear Lord, look over us as we deal with the business of the city today that we may make wise decisions, not only to folks here today, but wise decisions for the future. Be with our troops overseas. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You don't have to throw up so soon. I did not bring that proclamation with me. Do you have it? It's on my desk unless somebody has it. Yeah. Just a little way ahead on that. Anybody who's here for Agenda Item 8, which are administrative hearings for alleged alcohol violations as pursued to Chapter 6 of the City of State's alcohol ordinance. And if you would like to at this time, go meet with Lieutenant Robin or Representative, I might tell you here, Sheriff who's here from the Department of Revenue regarding the potential resolution of your case before we get to that Agenda Item. Please feel free to do so. I know Lieutenant Brian's out there in conference room talking with folks. I'm going to move past Agenda Item 3 because I did not bring that proclamation up with me and want to be, as soon as I get up here, we'll move to that.
Good job, ma'am.
Thank you. You had noticed the mayor, the mayor has a little problem. So, I may not feel the old age anymore as a world rightness man, but we'll move to that. Here it comes, right here. This is a proclamation for Alzheimer's National Awareness Month. Is Casey Corley here, please? Hand it up here now. Green on it. Good morning. How are you all? That's good to see you. Hey, Casey. This is a proclamation by the Mayor and City Council of State Spur, Georgia, recognizing Alzheimer's National Awareness Month. This is in recognition of individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with the devastating effects of Alzheimer's disease, the researchers who are seeking a cause or causes in cure, and the educational programs and support and services provided by the Alzheimer's Association. Now therefore be resolved that I, Lieutenant Moore, Mayor of State Spur, do hereby proclaim November Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. We present that to you all. You guys might want to take a picture today. Okay, well then we just wait. Thank you. Yeah, I saw that. Good Lord. Okay. We'll move to Agenda Item 4, which is public comments. I have here that Mr. Bill Thomas has registered to make a public comment today. Mr. Thomas is here.
I'm trying to make that. Councilman Britt, thank you. Well, we will then to Agenda Item 5, which is consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the approval of minutes and Item B, which is a consideration of a motion to send a resolution saying that we did award the CDB grant monies at the last meeting. I'll ask for a motion from Council upon view.
So, take it.
Any discussion?
The only discussion will be mayor that they're looking to have you sign those before you head out for the day, so, so they can give them to the contractor.
Okay, we'll do. Any other discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve the consent agenda passes. Agenda Item 6, consideration of a motion to award a contract of RAW construction for the natural gas expansion project at the I-16 industrial parking amount of $1,108,950 in State Airways. Could you come speak to that particularly?
This is the contract to award the construction of the I-16 industrial park. Um, we agreed that it was, it were success, that we had previous budget for the project. The over exchange in this project is mostly to be permitted where we have installed this pipe and railway. We had reason to open ditch and it's a little bit big to have, I'm under the one contract, but the other two, you can see the barriers and the real end pipe, the old end and the ditch pipe. And wound up to get the tunnel to give, play wire between the hole and change parts about half a foot to connect the old end. And the difference in the two is mostly killing the difference between oil price and the opening price. And the other, one of the places was where the vision decided to let the people to industrial park, it's about a thousand per acre, and live vision to this place. So, this is a price that's about $2,000. And we also, from the original business, we did add some ID for any intersections to serve, some of the customers that always there, so. At this time, probably use conditions, swap money and cash on hand is good. We may get reason put on here to get the long proceeds ready, so we think we can at least now do the cash on hand and swap money that comes in and possibly some East School, some other equipment and we'll make, maybe connect those people, make a termination in the actual parts and do some work. And we looked over, I've got some bid tabs from a couple of jobs, jobs that recently bid in a social circle and, and when bid in Tri County for very similar work, their prices almost identical. I feel like the prices are good, but there's a little bit of savings to have anywhere.
How much cash you putting in and that's coming out of the natural gas pond, right?
We feel like if we can go with the same question of re-cash and then swap money and change up the balance of it, we have three projects scheduled for next year and we may have a termination of the parts and that's still going. So, we.
So, this was a part of the construction, not that industrial park was 100% owned by the city, is that correct?
What was the initial, initial estimate?
Initially estimated about 78 and about, so, now, now it's like, so, about 9% of the job being open ditch. What happened was the DOD doesn't maintain the product, so they've got a ride, right way, right away, which is now overcrowded trees. And we basically had two options. And they came, well, after we submitted it, to go in front of the tree line, open ditch. They would accept that, so go in front of the tree line closer to the pavement, you're going to have to bore it, bore it. You're going to have to clear all those overcrowded trees, which is basically, notice what for that. On the other side, we're fully fledged logging operation and training, so that would end up the, so this is the cheap route, two options. And the option is open ditch and open ditch.
And some of that, just, I'm correct, water one side, gas one side, you wanted to be going to do those together? I didn't give an answer. I, I'm in the circle, I think I got out of it, but I didn't know.
They, well, that side is packed, right? They would, they had to get some vision right away in some places just to get the water and the horse manning on the other side. It wasn't actually going to get all of them on one side of the road.
So, there's already, the answer repeated, there's already utilities?
Yeah. We had to have more additional right away to do, had purchased or bought these, perhaps somebody in addition to.
Okay, what Stephen asked.
When will this start?
We'd like to start December. They had, you know, they went stage and get high purchase and it's one thing we're seeing in the gas business right now, all the, all the gas coming all over the country, all materials associated with gas right now are long, are getting longer and longer being high, being, being, gas related. But they seem to be, felt pretty good that they could get high here to start, you know, there's something I'm missing. And probably, at least once we get started, but then when they're in land, land dedication, we might have the borer, one, you mean, that there's going to be a lot of restoration that we will have to do, but it does, in the grass and everything.
Can you give a long-term revenue estimate? I mean, how many customers do we anticipate this is going to serve down the road? I mean, obviously depending on Groveland 301.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing this.
What's the capacity?
Does your part. We have the capacity to, believe this line to serve, probably three or four customers to bring this around. Right now, we have chicken farm around, we're going to go out and serve. And it won't be bad, but right now, there's a couple commercial customers along the way that are going to get this, we have a truck stop that's out there. This is very spag, spag, we're going to go to the industrial park, watch it, get, this is any of the, 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 the warehouse.
Okay, do I have a motion? To award a contract or any other construction for the natural gas expansion project to the I-16 industrial park amount of $1,188,950.
So, who? Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item 7, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2014-33, a resolution to adopt the First Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2015 Budget for each Fund in the City of State Spur, Georgia. Can I get Ms. Cindy to come up and discuss this Agenda Item?
This is the first thirty minute, I have 13. Agenda item on here, I care for, and I have property too, in the projects that I'm in target, and there's a lot of those, those items.
Any questions for Ms. Cindy regarding this resolution?
I'm making motion to approve a resolution 2014-33.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're going to move to Agenda Item 8, which is administrative hearings for alleged alcohol violations as pursued to Chapter 6 of the City of State's alcohol ordinance. Okay. Now, let me ask you real quick, are we done with discussions out in the hallway? Is that what Mr. Horn, he's calling the check call? Okay.
Check call.
I just want to share with council before we get started on this particular part of the agenda, that this is going to be done a little bit differently. I mean, that last time we sort of did things en masse, Attorney Lee Park wasn't real comfortable with that. I'll try to get through these as quickly as we can, but we do have to do them eventually. So, we're ready, now we'll move into considering whether certain persons or entities that hold alcoholic beverage licenses issued by the city have violated Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of State Spur regarding alcoholic beverages, and if so, what sanctions are appropriate under the ordinance. These cases are being brought by the Department of Public Safety against several hall, several alcohol license holders and also the Department of Revenue. Before we proceed with those cases, I would like to establish the general procedures these cases will follow. When sitting as a quasi judicial body, the mayor and city council are not sitting as a court of this state, as defined in OCGA 24-1-2, as such strict compliance with the Georgia Rules of Evidence as provided for in Chapter 24 of the Official Code of Georgia is not required. Rulings on the relevancy and admissibility of evidence and whether to hear, argument, and all any points of order, including whose challenge counsel shall be made by the presiding officer pursuant to the authority granted to presiding officer in Section 2-2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of State Spur in light of the purpose and scope of this hearing. The standard of proof for determining whether violations are taking place is a preponderance of the evidence. In determining whether the preponderance of evidence lies, council may consider all the facts and circumstances of the case, the witnesses' manner of testifying, their intelligence, their means and opportunity for knowing the facts to which they testify, the nature of the facts to which they testify, the probability or improbability of their testimony, their interest or want of interest, and their personal credibility so far as the saying may legitimately appear from the hearing. In arriving at a decision, the council from the facts proved and from the absence of counter evidence to the facts proved, may infer the existence of other facts reasonably and logically, logically consequent to those proved. In other words, the council can't make reasonable emphasis from the facts presented here today in determining whether violations occurred and the number of violations that did occur. Moral and reasonable certainty is all that can be expected in a legal investigation. Both the Department of Public Safety, the Department of Revenue, and the licensee have the right to be represented by council, the right to present evidence and cross-examine the evidence presented by the opposing party. Finally, both the Department of Public Safety and the Department of Revenue and the licensee enjoy the right to appeal any decision here today to the Superior Court of Bullock County via petition for serve to Tioria. All right, let's start with swearing everybody in today who will be speaking or giving evidence. So, anybody who will be speaking or giving evidence regarding these administrative hearings, and we're talking about administrative hearings 1 through 5 on the first offense from the Department of Revenue and 1 through 7 on the first offense from the State Department Police Department, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give here, they shall be truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, please be seated. First defense on the agenda that we will discuss is Defense 1, which is attributed to Fallow, which grew 25, North Side Drive East, is, or either Ms. McKelvin or Mr. Jones here to represent Fallow. There, Mr. Rick.
Mayor, I don't know if all the other folks stood up, they need to stand, I think a lot of it's, it's standing. I don't, I didn't see any of the other, other. I saw, I saw Mr. Rick standing up.
If you're, if you're going to come up to this podium and your name's up here, you need to stand up.
Yeah.
Let's do it again. Okay. Raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give here today shall be truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. We need to keep in tables.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. Okay, please state your name for the record. And you have been due this warrant, yes or no? Yes. And Mr. Bryan?
We both, Mr. McKelvin's on the State Department of Public Safety and Fallow, agreed to waive testimony today's, the State Department of Public Safety and, uh, the City of Fallow as a licensee, with this help, named on the license. We probably agree with the testimony to be given by, that the revenue will show, or Department of Revenue will show the employee of Fallow, he's selling alcoholic beverage to an undercover operative who was under 21 years of age. Both parties stipulate that the employee of Fallow did violate the State Department of Municipal Ordinance, enjoyed the law by selling alcoholic beverage to a person under 21 years of age. Have any, sign motion to enter a court of employees of the mayor and council to accept that offer.
Okay, did you, Ms. McKelvin, do you stipulate that you did sign this paper?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do I have a motion from council finding that Fallow Grocery Store at 325 North Side Drive East did indeed violate the alcohol ordinance on April 15, 2014?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion regarding punishment for violation of the alcohol, it says discussed in this last motion, either with a warning or a one-day suspension? Do I have a motion from council as to having one?
I think a motion that would be a warning, first defense. Have them there.
Let's do it again. Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. You can give a warning, thank you. Do I have Mr. Patel from Dixie Food Mart here, please? Good morning. Can you please state your name for the record?
Uh, my name, okay.
Okay, you have been due this warrant, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Same as last, uh, with mayor, uh, Department of Public Safety petition and, uh, Mr. Patel, licensee for Dixie Food Mart, to respond to the agreement to waive testimony in the case of State Spur, Department of Public Safety petitioner and Dixie Food Mart, we propose, uh, licensee, uh, a brief testimony given by the Department of Revenue will show the employee of Dixie Food Mart is selling alcoholic beverage to an undercover operative who was under 21 years of age. Both parties stipulate that the employee, uh, Dixie Food Mart did violate the State Department of Municipal Ordinance, enjoyed the law by selling alcoholic beverage to a person under 21, who was under 21 years of age. And if the mayor and council approve the stipulation, the fact, the testimony, we have a signed motion to enter a court of.
Okay, did you sign on this paper?
Yes.
Mr. Patel, I think, do you stipulate that?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion finding Dixie Food Mart at 197 North Side Drive East guilty of violating the alcohol ordinance on August 20th, 2014? Do I have a motion from council?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion regarding punishment for Dixie Food Mart for our alcohol ordinance, either a warning or a one-day suspension? Do I have a motion for either one?
Motion to issue a warning?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Excuse me, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you have a warning. Is Mr. Wooler here, please, with Clyde's Market number 76? Please state your name for the record.
Very good.
And I sent Mr. Wooler to the.
I did. Hope I brought it right there.
Everybody does.
Have you been due this warrant?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Who's Frank?
Mayor, uh, with Clyde's Market, Market number 76, 37, and 48, they're all broken fences, if they can be heard silently, um, getting the same license fee.
We can hear him silently, so we're going to have to ask separately, okay? Is there different locations?
All right.
Your current residence location?
Yes, ma'am. The State Department of Public Safety petitioner and, uh, licensee for Clyde's Market number 76, 37, and 48, will respond to the agreement to waive testimony in these cases, uh, from the State Department of Public Safety petitioner and Mr. Wooler as licensee for Clyde's Market. We agree with the testimony to be given, uh, the Department of Revenue and the State Department of Police, will show the employee of Clyde's selling alcoholic beverage to a person under 21 years of age. Both parties stipulate that the employee of Clyde's Market, Fallow, the State Department of Municipal Ordinance, enjoyed the law by selling alcoholic beverage to a person under 21 years of age. Would the mayor and council approve the stipulation, the testimony, the person being Clyde's selling, Market number 76, August 6th?
Mr. Wooler, did you sign on that paper?
Yes, ma'am.
Stipulate guilt? Do I have a motion finding that Clyde's Market number 76 did indeed violate the State Spur alcohol ordinance on August 20th, 2014?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion finding that Clyde's Market number 48 located at 12309 Highway 301 South did indeed violate the State Spur alcohol ordinance on August 11th, 2014?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion stating that Clyde's Market, finding that Clyde's Market number 37, 1679 Fair Road, did indeed violate the State Spur alcohol ordinance on August 11th, 2014?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And before I ask for, um, what council deems as punishment for these violations, I do have to ask you, Mr. Wooler, I think it is point in time to be fair for you to address there's three violations, even though they're initial violations by Clyde's, we do have three, so, um, tell me kind of what's going on, what your game plan is for not coming back.
Well, what we have done in that, uh, the way our system works, is we got eight, eight, I guess, items in our, our hand that is always, uh, based on selling beer, old wine, or exactly, it's under agents by authority. Another system that we had in place is through our form of sale system, which is cashier system. You have to visit the beginner in the day, offer some identification piece before you report, our cashier will allow you to do that. So, by doing that, you know, these, um, employees or former employees of ours willingly overrode the system by faults of time that they, they put into cashier system. Upon this, uh, you know, these violations, you know, they're terminated immediately, no questions asked, because we figured that, you know, if that's their procedure, if they're going to override the system, you know, we'll be employed in our organization. Secondly, what we have done since this, we have, uh, sent all our store managers to your tips program. We're currently, I think today, we're more sending all of our store managers, I mean, shooting our system, as the main cashier, to the tips program. We allowed an organization, I think a couple of weeks ago, to come in, put stickers on our 12 packs, fear, you know, the trouble that you can get in by. So, with this, we've gone through this in Liberty County a good many years ago. We have put a, a piece of paper in place that every cashier signs every week stating consequences of selling beer to a minor. We went through a program in Liberty County a good many years ago, and that helped, in that situation, we still had somebody that overrode our system, sold beer to a minor. And, you know, we feel that we're doing as much as we possibly can, we're educating our people, and, uh, and, you know, we understand that if they violate it, we want to make sure that we know what we can.
Do you all have any questions for the store? Anything you like to ask?
Ms. Joyce's flags enrolled in your tips program?
They have 40 people enrolled tomorrow.
Any?
There's that.
Thank you for bearing that.
Do I have a motion regarding punishment as it pertains to Clyde's Market number 76, 17874 Highway 67, for violation of alcohol ordinance on August 20th of this year, first offense, either warning or one-day suspension? First offense, either a warning or one day suspension?
Motion for a warning.
Say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's a warning. Do I have a motion, uh, for punishment as regards to violating the alcohol ordinance on August eleventh, two thousand and fourteen for Clyde's Market number forty-eight, one-two-three-nine-nine, Highway three oh one south? Either a warning or a one day suspension of the license?
Motion for a warning.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion for punishment for the alcohol ordinance for violation, excuse me, alcohol ordinance for Clyde's Market number thirty-seven, one-six-oh-nine Fair Road on August eleventh, two thousand and fourteen? Either a warning or a one day suspension?
Motion for a warning.
Say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Right here.
Our next case is with Mr. Allen Friesen.
I thought you were gonna do that and storage at the same time, I mean, subsequent to that, mate.
I'll handle that, Mr. Thomas, thank you very much. Mr. Friesen, are you there, please? Mr. Keith or Sinto?
Darren off, but I'm here.
Okay, hold forward, please. Please state your name for the record. Excuse me?
Dana Kennedy.
Dana Kennedy, yeah, you're on, and tell me what your position is with the board, please.
Uh, manager.
Are you reading short strong? Um, there's a second offense for this same establishment. There, the witness is not here today, we will retain on that second offense unless something has changed.
Yeah, just like, uh, mayor, in both second offense cases, uh, we have motions in our department, so if those state or only one here, then that will be on the fastening, so if it would be on the last, then it would be most of the cases.
Okay. Alright, three seconds. Okay, you have been duly sworn, Mr. Kennedy, correct? Alright, Mr. Frank, as regards the first offense?
Uh, the State Department of Public Safety petitioner and licensee for, uh, the Food World responded with a three-way testimony in the basis of the Department of Public Safety petitioner and, uh, Mr. Kennedy representing Food World as the petitioner, uh, petitioner. We further agree the testimony will be given by the Parker Reddy, will show the employee, Food World did sell alcoholic beverage to an undercover operative who was under twenty-one years of age. Both parties stipulate that the employee of Food World did violate the State Department of Municipal Ordinance and ruled the law by selling alcoholic beverage to a person under twenty-one years of age. Uh, do have a signed motion and completely indicate first and second offense if, uh, mayor and council approve the stipulation, so it's back to a testimony.
First offense was eight-twenty-two thousand and fourteen, second offense was ten-eleven of two thousand and fourteen. Have you signed agreements that both those offenses on eight-twenty, you do stipulate you sign as you go to agreement on eight-twenty-two thousand and fourteen and ten-eleven, two thousand and fourteen, is that correct? Okay, do I have a motion finding that Food World number seven-nine-three on Fair Road did indeed violate the State Department of City Alcohol Ordinance on eight-twenty-two thousand and fourteen?
Make a motion to accept the, uh, agreement.
Do I have a second?
Or the guilty plea, sorry, say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Do I have a motion? That Food World, finding Food World number seven-nine-three on Fair Road did indeed violate the alcohol ordinance on August the eleventh? Excuse me, October the eleventh, two thousand and fourteen?
Can we move? Second, say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm gonna stop and ask, uh, I'm trying to report something real quick. Do we need to do a finding of the first offense punishment in a separate finding of second, or can we go to second offense?
The quickest way to do it is just, uh, those are penalty for first violation, and those are penalty for the second violation, the second.
Okay. Do I have a motion by council regarding punishment for our first offense for Food World number seven-nine-three located at Fair Road, either a warning or a one day suspension for the alcohol ordinance?
After the first offense, I'll make a motion rather that we give them a warning. I say, can I have a mirror?
All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Before we ask for punishment on the second offense, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Kennedy, if you will speak to both of those offenses and what you all have put into place, go ahead, so it's not gonna be here again.
Um, one of them, first place, the cashier, this community, she looked at ID, she did get a great date, went birthday, um, you know, they're trying to do that. I got her new hire, where she's hired, signed her new hire paperwork, where she knows to do that. Um, the, uh, she, she did punch in the date that she was supposed to, I mean, she looked at ID, under age. On the second offense, the, uh, the cashier, um, went and, well, we had it, all the cashiers go back and sign off on, making sure that we, and educated them on making sure that we knew not to do that anymore. If I have some assigned statements for all employees. But on the second one, they went back and the cashier stole to, when he checked ID, he was having trouble, he went to key it in. And flagged, and it wouldn't let himself, so claims that he thought something wrong with his, so he calls for a, we call our office assistants, calls for that person, they go there, somehow they might have cleared it out. You can literally see that if once it does, you have to clear the whole order out, so there's no way that, you didn't want the order out, so they had to re-rank it. And when they re-rank it, they punched, the first day it wasn't working, so, um, you know, that's what happened. Got them to go back and sign off and say, you saw my business, because, you know, recognize, hey, did it at new hire paperwork, now you sign in again. Educated them today, try and get something, they don't get to sign off every week. I mean, that's basically, and I heard about tips program, it's instead of some of us, it's probably, so.
We can't, anything?
There's more than, we're getting to install some equipment where you actually scan the, um, the license, where there is no patch. They're hoping to try to do that in the next couple of weeks, hopefully, where there is no, you know, that way when they scan ID, it will actually, you know, you're comfortable on there, it's way to.
And that's why, you do that with stores or just the store there on Fair Road?
Well, they're trying to, they're trying to get that, they have no common, but they're trying to get it installed here, so, but, we're just trying to make it where you suppose each ID has to be, just be a bit. But we still have to have the right, we're looking, trying to get that installed quickly. You can see it, happened two times where the ID was there, he was under age, they recognize that it's, you know.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Lepark, can you read what, um, would be recommended punishment or options of punishment for a second offense, please, for our current ordinance?
For the second violation, the day of the first, with, within any twelve month period of the first violation, there may be a three day suspension of the license. It's a make and a show. There was a show.
No, it's a make, come from show to make.
That's right.
Okay. Do, I have a motion from council regarding punishment for the second offense for Food World number seven-nine-three?
Before we, before we make a motion, may I ask you, Allen, what kind of contingencies can you put on something like this?
Um, meaning, you know, is it meaning when it starts?
Uh, either when it starts, or additional training, or making sure ID scanners are installed within six months, or anything along that line?
There doesn't seem to be any authority within our terminal, and it still poses any sort of terms of probation on the license. A lot of all alcohol ordinances have provisions that grant authorities to go and invite you to close those conditions. They, the ours just merely give you the ability to suspend a license for a period of, or something.
Or not.
Or not.
Or not?
That's our only option.
There may be a three day suspension of the license, that's what it says.
That's one of the discussions we have when we meet, on a later date, is to have it where if someone is doing some mitigating things, or including a system, they're getting trained, then we will have the authority to say, this is your punishment, as opposed to what we have, to give us a little bit of leeway, um, in what we can do, depending on what you've done, or what you have. And so, as of right now, it's.
Right now, it's three days or nothing?
Ad written.
As they said in the Bible, as it is said, let it be written, as it is written, let it be done.
It may not be a three day suspension, does that mean you've been opposed something between zero and three days?
It's not clear.
It's, uh, it's not clear.
It's just not clear. Okay. So do we have a motion from council?
So basically, we have four choices, zero, one, two, or three.
One and two is not necessarily a choice, that's what's not clear, I guess you can impose it and... We just can't, can't say definitively that that's an option that council has.
So is Allen, is your recommendation zero or three?
Uh, yeah, all I can do is redeem the language as a third, instead of maybe a three days.
I strike out from there.
Can you, can you translate it to another language, just?
I, I certainly.
Can you do it live?
I'll, I'll, I'll all agree, comes from less than that, luckily, but I would certainly assume that we can do zero, one, two, or three, I think, I would think.
Well, I think, if you do that, no one's probably going to appeal it. So probably, whatever your decision to be, will, will be unlikely, they'll definitely be challenged or appealed. So, what you decide to do probably won't really receive any greater scrutiny, so. So unless it appeals somebody, will appeal some decisions made, probably will have to go clear, we could do with authority, we did, and then we'll go. That's, that's what we look at, if you don't know what you're doing, a little tip standard, that's.
To be clear, in the event a suspension of some length were to be approved by council, when would that suspension go into effect?
It doesn't say.
Oh, we gotta love it. Um, yeah, I, I would, I would think that that would need to be stipulated, I, I would think that would need to be stipulated with motion.
I would think you could agree to that, and sort of impose it, and it, like I said, any decision you make that's not appealed, remains your decision. So if you make a decision to suspend the license for a day, or two days, or three days, make it, make it begin on a Friday, give it to a day certain, and the person who's, uh, is opposing on, doesn't appeal that decision, that decision stands. If they take issue with it, they can simply appeal it to a court.
So, in asking for a motion, ask for a motion of punishment, whatever that works to be, by council, and then at that point, if a suspension were to be levied, council would then have to motion as to when it should be levied, would that be correct?
I would think so.
Okay. Do I have a motion from council as it regards punishment for alcohol violation, uh, violation of alcohol ordinance for Food World number seven-nine-three on dates eight-twenty, two thousand and fourteen, and dates ten-eleven, two thousand and fourteen?
Um, I make a motion, uh, for the second offense for, um, Food World, to be, uh, for three days, um, for three days. Please don't come back again after I show.
Do I have a second?
What you want to do on three seconds?
Three seconds. Wait.
That's, that's the, that's the next question.
That's the, that's the next motion.
As to when to impose, impose the punishment, so please.
Alright.
Wait a minute, let's stop, so we have a motion for Mr. Riggs calling for a three day suspension of alcohol license for the alcohol ordinance, do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Well, yeah, I would think that the days could be included in that amendment, so what dates do you recommend?
He said that it has to be two separate.
We're gonna do separate.
Why does it have to be separate?
I didn't say it had to be separate.
Okay.
It can be separate.
It doesn't make any sense to be separate, this is their punishment, let's put it all in one amendment.
I amend, I amend my motion to say beginning today.
No, well.
Tomorrow.
You gotta get, you gotta give them, I mean, you need to give them real time, even George Parker Reddy usually uses seven days. What do you have to do, say, ten, ten days?
Mr. Kennedy?
Happens as soon as possible.
Soon as possible? Okay, does council agree that it would begin tomorrow, so be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, even midnight, is that correct?
I amend, I amend my motion to begin tomorrow.
Okay, so it's a three day suspension, Mr. Riggs' motion is for a three day suspension, beginning tomorrow, November fifth?
Yeah, ours will all say that.
To begin tomorrow, November fifth, sixth and seventh, and the midnight, November seventh, two thousand and fourteen.
So prosecutor, defense, they're in agreement?
Yes.
You guys okay with this?
I guess my only concern, and Allen's sitting there, Allen, I mean, that, is there a, I mean, like I said, even George Parker Reddy sends you a letter, and it says, this is today, this is me too, as soon as you can have time to make it official, I know we're having a conversation about it, but, is there any, any issue with that?
I'd say he's right to it. I'd say he's right to it, if he wants to, you know, oppose some sentence, he's got a problem, if, if, if he has a problem with it, or Rob Ryan has a problem with it, they go all there in spirit, or file a petition to appeal his case, and stay away from Delta. And so that's the remedy for any sort of objection. They have, they're agreeing to it, so, I mean, people aren't usually object, you know, they're okay with that.
John, did you formalize that amendment?
I did.
We did, do I have a second? I would have discussion, all in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Duddy, Time Saver three oh one North Main Street, please. Okay, please state your name for the record. And you have been duly sworn, yes or no? Mr. Frank?
Uh, it's, it's mayor of council, uh, Mr. Duddy, I think, or, and, and, violation, uh, the State Department of Public Safety petitioner, and Mr. Duddy, for Time Saver, uh, we're looking to make sure, so we're finally agreeing, three way testimony. Case of State Department of Public Safety petitioner, and Mr. Duddy, for Time Saver. We probably agree with the testimony that should be given by the Parker Reddy, and State Department of Public Safety, that, that employee, uh, Time Saver did sell alcoholic beverage to an undercover operative who was under twenty-one years of age. Both parties stipulate that the employee of Time Saver did violate the State Department of Municipal Ordinance and ruled the law by selling alcoholic beverage to a person under twenty-one years of age. Uh, Mr. Duddy, it's a signed day motion, and we're completely on first and second offense, uh, if the mayor and council approve the stipulation, so it's back to a testimony.
Mr. Duddy, did you indeed sign both papers stating that, that your, um, store did violate the alcohol ordinance on eleven-twenty, two thousand and thirteen, and on ten-eleven, two thousand and fourteen? Okay, do I have a motion from council, finding that Time Saver three oh one North Main Street did indeed violate the State Department of Alcohol Ordinance on eleven-twenty, two thousand and thirteen?
Go move.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, um, why, why are we bringing something from nearly a year ago right now, and, and when we find this finding, at what point is this person, where, where's the violation? Are, are they back to zero at eleven-twenty? Does that go away, or we set the clock now, where does the twelve months start, where does the one point?
If the violation date's a measure, put the date of the violation, the date of violation, like if DUI case, you say DUI, your, the DUI is as you're from, your arrest date for the first one, your arrest date for the second. That way you can, so, play the trial of your case to escape the penalty for the second offense. I think there's same principle in interpretation, not here, although they're not selling alcohol ordinance. So you can measure the first violation on eleven-twenty, two thousand and thirteen, and you have a second violation that allegedly occurred on, within eleven months of the first one. So the second one is within the twelve month window, if you measure it, as. within eleven months of the first one, so the second one is within the twelve-month window, if you measure it as traditionally violations are measured. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Hey, the question that counsel board has secondly acquired, is this body just now hearing the violation from eleven twenty two thousand thirteen?
Well, more along the lines that, uh, discovered the first offense while prosecuting the second, you know what I mean? Did we go back and look at the record, is this what we found?
I don't know, I mean, I believe that, you know, I don't have the answer to that question. I don't know why they're only bringing it there.
I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. Ryan.
I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to challenge the process or anything like that, I just, you know, want this person, you know, treated fairly.
The violation was small at the time, uh...
About the second?
About the second, when this came forward, I believe some of the information should be used in this, in upcoming, of course, will clarify the reason that these have not been on the record. But I believe that way you could, which means, um...
And, and either way, the, the defendant has tried to document the case correctly.
Do you contain any further discussion?
No, I guess.
Okay, all in favor, please, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Doughty, before we, uh, well, we'll go ahead and do that, and then we'll talk about punishment. Do I have a motion from counsel, uh, finding that Time Saver three oh one North Main Street did indeed violate the State Department of City Alcohol Ordinance on ten eleven two thousand fourteen?
So send them, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion as it regards punishment for violating the State Department of Alcohol Ordinance by Time Saver three oh one North Main Street on eleven twenty two thousand thirteen? Either a warning or a one-day suspension.
Motion for a warning?
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, before we go to talking about your second offense, Mr. Doughty, can you please tell me what you've done to, so that we don't see you again? If you don't mind, I can just speak into the microphone, because I know some folks have a hard time hearing you.
Um, I have, uh, personally, um, also, uh, I think, first one today. Um, I'm basically, I'm shooting that one, so I just, I just, like, I'm connecting with the rest of them. I see there's about, you know, there's, where, I'm square, and now, things are, this was a little cabin, okay?
Y'all have any questions for Mr. Patel?
Are these both, both places under the same license? Where you are licensed older for two different licenses. One different for K and J and the other one for Sparkers. Two different, two different alcohol licenses. Okay.
Any other questions? I have a motion for counsel as it regards punishment for Sparkers Convenience Stores, 799 Highway 80 West, for violation of states for alcohol ordinance on August 11th, excuse me, not October 11th, 2014, either a warning or a one-day suspension. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, do I have a motion as regards punishment for K and J Food Mart, 123 West Main Street, for violation of states for alcohol ordinance on October 11th, 2014? Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have received warnings on that. Mr. James Stafford, Run Runners, please, are you here?
Uh, Mayor, you know, I spoke to Mr. Stafford yesterday.
Okay.
However, uh, did you mail him a motion? And he got pushed into the book. I do have the sign, I do have the document, and also I go, um, to relax, I've got a children also.
That's what you'll have as part of the question. Make sure you speak into the microphone, okay?
Yes, Mayor. I'll have a say to that, Mr. Stafford does. Has heard, um, motion and guilty, but has been signed. I've also signed it. Um, letter dated yesterday to Mayor, to the Council staff. I'd like to take this opportunity to apologize to the city for the events that occurred when we take the act of serving minors very seriously, and we're going to go with our staff and communicate seriousness and likelihood and the consequences of doing so. Regardless, we are, uh, we as a whole are responsible, and we as a whole work together, um, and our teams do their job. I'm in the process of getting my, um, certain staff to work about it, which you do our internal organization since for sales of minors with loss of the ordinance resulted in our current employees to be in fact the consequences of their actions. I'm aware of our good colleagues and we strive to remind you of the implications of your work. Any minor profound violation showed up on the ground for a violation of the city responsible person. I apologize to the state and to the local state for still have devastating consequences. As a result, we will also tell our company that I am wrong. I would like to apologize to my actions for any complications that I do and all responsible for business operated for, uh, like our customers and citizens. As an operator, all business pressures rely on each, every number of factors mentioned in your decisions and choices correctly related to your success from our extreme discretion just back to home operators.
I'm asking Mr. Lee Park is...
He's saying, can you sentence him in abstention?
Yes, exactly, I'm asking.
Oh. He's not here, he's, he appears to have waived his rights and, and I would think whatever you do today, like I said, unless he appeals it and he wants to raise the issue, he wasn't here and all trampled his rights. Except when he appears to want that to happen, he has a right to do that. So, I think you're all right. Whatever you do today, if he doesn't feel it, I would stand with you.
Okay. Do I have a motion for finding Run Runners located at 7 University Plaza did indeed violate the State's Pro City Alcohol Ordinance on October 11th, 2014?
Salute.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion for punishment for Run Runners located at 7 University Plaza for first offense occurring on October 11th, 2014, either a warning or a one-day suspension?
Most for a first offense, one.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Warning is finished. All right, we will move to a hearing for Fast and Easy. Mr. Ryan, is your partner ready to proceed?
Uh, yes, Mayor.
Can you please run your first witness?
More closely, you've got to get away with it.
Mr. Riley, were you swaying with everybody?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Ryan, do you have a question? Your witness, please.
Detective Riley, you put your name on your show and heard it to the council.
Detective Weller, Spaceport Police Department.
How long have you been in this post-survival results?
Thirteen years.
How long have you been employed in this department for this part?
Thirteen years.
On, uh, any question? Ten out of 2014, uh, you assist in conducting non-alcoholic clients and investigation back to me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, before we talk about the investigation, uh, do you know some of your current duties of affecting the social behavior?
This case, any felony? Comes across the desk, he assigns, he work on murders. Burglaries, that by tagging, uh, also got on board with the alcohol compliance, so, sorry, council.
Your investigation of fast and easy on their drive occurring in South River, County?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to pursue your follow-through in this investigation?
We do, uh, with the confidential source. Bring them in. You take all their ID, all their money, everything is all from them. All they have is just their ID, just that one, and that's all. They're, they explain what's going on there, explain how they used the device on, uh, going to the, uh, they're giving some money, most of them aside for purchase of alcohol.
Uh, so, on that day, did you uncover the operative any other ID on her or on her particular license? No. Just may I like to tender a copy of the confidential source's driver's license, uh, that had made the, uh, protection of the information have been wired out, however, that's only in this photo copy for identification, was I have a question on that.
Do you have a better word on that license, Mr. Ryan is? Let's see, 322-1994.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so she was pointing.
Uh, Detective Weller, you report through the facts of the uncovered alcohol violation back to you on that day?
Um, we pulled up to the Fast and Easy. She's given ten dollars for going aside and purchase a six-pack of horse life. She walks up to the corner. She's got the recording device entire time saying, "I need the vehicle all the way for the purchase, all the way back." She goes in. She grabs the six-pack of horse life, puts it on the counter, presents her ID. The purchase is still made. She brings it and walks it back to the vehicle. Hands it over, the glasses turn on, it's made from those. The ID and the citations are kind of later.
Uh, do you and Sergeant Carlson had the opportunity to review the video, uh, that's taken on that night by the makeover, uh, operative? We did. Uh, have still shots been taken from that video for these years, like, bad? They're quite too tender. Um, still shots taken from the video of, uh, the employee of the Fast and Easy, uh, during that time. I'd like to ask, uh, licensee, if you'd like to inspect it for the tender. Any objection to that? Was the defendant, uh, Ms. Kristen Song identified as a defendant in your case?
Yes, sir.
Was, uh, criminal citation issued to her to appear in South River Municipal Hall?
Yes, sir.
Um, issued by county statutes, not in the state.
Any?
She's saying she doesn't remember the transaction, but, um, the store was busy, I guess there's a football game going on. Um, is there any other information you feel was part of the thing?
No, uh, I just remembered it. This football game is busy, but I looked back and it was like there was a line at the door. Just a couple people there, I mean, they best, they want to in the line, I saw it.
Mr. Mayor, can you, or the public continue with the response?
Okay, Mr. Howell, do you want to come, question witness, please?
Actually, I'm, I have something to say. Uh, I thought, uh, today is just a meeting. I have a lawyer, and then my lawyer, he couldn't read the, you know, bills, and, uh, wasn't prepared, or otherwise I thought that she had here with us and, and the lawyer. And, uh, she thought, I mean, she checked the ID, but I was working at that, at that time, at that day, there. And she thought we should check the ID. And, uh, one of the officers, he showed us, uh, the tape, but it doesn't show that, you know, uh, that they, uh, shown, showed the transaction for the ID, I think. And, uh, and, uh, there is no evidence. There's no evidence was the ID, because she's saying she checked the ID, and I know, and I know I was working at that time, it was busy, and they come about eleven something.
It's a homecoming.
It's about busy.
Do you actually, actually what we need to begin, do you have any questions for Mr. Weller at this point? No questions for Mr. Weller, we'll, we'll hit the comments now. Suppose, do you have any questions for this witness?
I don't have no question, because I actually, I wasn't prepared for it.
Okay.
Of course, I could say just a meeting today.
Okay. Um, Mr. Lee Park, is it, if they would like to have this table to bring an attorney to come back and rehear? What is your opinion on that?
Well, I guess they're, if they're vetting a motion for continued, you could grant it, but I believe they will give them a notice and a summons to meet here, isn't that correct?
We have a few notices.
You were saying?
We, we, uh, we thought it's just a meeting. I don't know, they say, we thought the court, and, uh, our lawyer said, our lawyer said, we have to go to court first before we pay guilty for the, for the shift. So, uh, I was, uh, surprised, you know, by this court, yeah.
I'm looking at a notice of hearing addressed to Bolivia Patel, 799 Highway 80 West, State's Pro, Georgia. Is that here?
No, no, this is, uh, 118 Lanyard Drive, Fast and Easy, Mr. Howell. Yeah, we have a few in there.
Here we go. This is a Fast and Easy, it's a Marlboro, uh, 118 Lanyard Drive, State's Pro, Georgia, 3rd and 4th, I made, is that here?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
I have a, uh, a notice of hearing that was sent to you that says an administrative hearing will be conducted by the Marion City Council in regular scheduled meeting in the council chambers on the 7th floor. It says, excuse me, it says, excuse me, it says the Marion Council shall hear evidence as to whether the alcoholic beverage license issued in Marlboro had it. The operation of the convenience store should be suspended or revoked in violations of Chapter 6. It also says that the hearing will be conducted in accordance with due process standards. The evidence will be presented, you have a right to be represented by council, present evidence in process of having the evidence presented against you. This was signed October 20th, and there is a, there is a certified receipt indicating this was delivered to someone on this day.
Yeah, we, we are not denying that. We, we are not denying that we give this one.
It is a sufficient notice, receipt or form that they've suffered to write, so, in my opinion, that wouldn't be a violation to continue with the hearing, but you certainly have a discretion to continue it. You can't, you can't continue today if you want it, but you also have a discretion to delay the hearing till later. But the rights will be offended if you proceed to that, in my opinion.
Okay, do y'all understand what our options are? We're talking about whether or not to continue and have this hearing at the next city council meeting. Uh, I guess if you so choose to bring counsel present with you, or go ahead and complete the hearing today, based on what we have. I mean, I think, to be honest with you, the notification was fairly clear, so...
We consulted our lawyer, and he said to, you know, uh, leave that, okay, I mean, we talked in, and, uh, you know, we thought we'll take that, uh, belief that they offered us, but when we talked to our lawyer, he said, "No, leave that." And that's what the situation was in. It wasn't like, you know, we denied that the incident that happened, that's another issue that we, you know, we have a lot of stuff to say about it. But, uh, we, well, his understanding was then, we come in here for court, yeah, absolutely not. And I, and I came to call this morning, that we have a hearing, you know, to, to hear about the situation, how we remedy, uh, the violations and stuff like that. And that's, these are the terms in the situation. It wasn't like it's a court, and we have to be content like you're team, find or not find, and all that kind of stuff. It was not, it was not that.
Mayor, it's, it's not understanding, I guess I'm not saying this out loud, also, you know, Brooke, if, if they were to have an attorney, the attorney would come back in, rather than whether we would present the exact same thing that they just said to the exact same committee. So, I'm saying that out loud, that that's what would occur. Uh, now, an attorney can say things that would enter our minds or whatever, but what would happen is the exact same thing would occur. If this were a second or third offense, I think I'd feel a little differently about it, but since it's a first offense, it's, it's not going to affect them if we were to let them have an attorney or, or not. It's a first offense, and if we would be consistent in what we've done today, that would be a warrant with what we have done, and they were not. I'm not saying that's what we would do, but being consistent, that was most likely, I would assume that would be the outcome. So, just wanted to, Brooke and Camille, kind of know. If the administrative parts, and Alvin and I've had a lot of conversations about exactly what an administrative hearing is and why sometimes people, I think, realize it's not. And it doesn't have anything to do with when you go to court to go see Alvin again, and he just happens to be the same guy in the room as a solicitor at that time with a judge for violation. So, this is an administrative hearing, that this is the jury, and that doesn't really change. I just wanted you guys to know.
What would you, what would you like to do?
I'm, I'm in here.
I'm sorry?
I'm in here.
Okay. In that case, in that case...
I would say no exception to guilty plea.
Wait a minute, we gotta read it out.
Do you?
Do I have, thank you. Do I have a motion by...
Just like the other one, at all?
Do I have a motion by counsel to find the Fast and Easy, 118 Lanyard Drive, guilty of violating the State's Pro City Alcohol Ordinance on 10/11/2014?
Salute.
Woo! Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Come on. Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion as regards the punishment of Fast and Easy located at 118 Lanyard Drive for violating the State's Pro City Alcohol Ordinance on 10/11/2014 with either a warning or a one-day suspension for the alcohol ordinance?
I make motion, we, uh, give a warning for a first offense?
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thanks, guys. Okay, I think that concludes our alcohol hearing portion of the program. Now we'll move to dinner, 119, which is other business from the city council, Phil, I think you had something to share with us, so...
Uh, not so much to say, but, um, Manny, do you have the letter of support you did for that? You want to bring it up, or do you want to present? All right, present away. All right, come on up, please.
Yeah, this is my question.
Good morning, I'm Amy Carey, I'm Saturday planning development for the city. Mayor, what I knew this morning, a request is that the council authorize by motion your execution of a project approval form for a request and proposal for the city to submit in partnership with the University of Sustainability free B-grant proposal. This will be submitted to the Department of Sustainability, by the B-grant, uh, next year, in partnership that I have on our project, for up to $15,000 of the sustainability fee that the student pays to be committed to the vertical garden that's proposed portion of the alleyway. Um, and I would say, common sense, you're today answering questions on my B-grant. Now, we have unanswered questions you have. I have to talk to my husband.
So, when, where does this show Manny a letter of support?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
It's just a form of the project approval form, where I have selected that the city will provide support to the project by being a partnering organization, department or individual. Mayor, you would sign in your official capacity, and I have noted on the form that it was passed and approved by the city State's Pro Mayor Council by vote, uh, on this, uh, this fourth day, I met with you.
I guess my question is, Manny, I missed it. What exactly would support of the project entail?
A competition for this B, the sustainability fee at the University of Sustainability, but part of that allocation, that B allocation, up to $15,000 would be committed for, could be vertical garden, that is proposed to be part of the alleyway to commit that. To construct and maintain that garden.
So, Doris Song, goes through the process of getting the money donated to it?
Yes, ma'am.
They actually collected from their fee, don't they? Isn't there a $5 sustainability fee per student or something like that?
I'm not sure what the amount is.
Five, ten, like?
Thankfully, this is, this is what we would typically think of as a letter of support, if I write an application.
That's what I was trying to say.
You're not an applicant in any form, fashion, you're supporting B-grants applications.
This is the official letter of cheerleader government.
I mean, that's what I assumed it was. Just want to be clear, there was no obligation.
Pretty much, right?
Do we need a motion to leave that for the letter of support? Do you want to say something to them? You raised your hand, kind of sort of.
I was just saying, thank you. Uh, we appreciate the city council's support for everything that we're doing with the city campus. Uh, we appreciate you being, uh, the city of State's Pro, being our sustainable partner, uh, throughout the process, and we're looking forward to getting started on our construction and, uh, are really excited about the beautification project for the alleyway between the two buildings. So, we would appreciate your support on this matter to get this, uh, sustainability grant.
Okay, do I have a motion to, uh, the city State's Pro issue a letter of support for the sustainability grant?
Salute.
You're upset?
Second.
All in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two warrants, the only decent one remains investigators on the project. If that's hit, you're the target. Just like that, I hope you mean.
Okay. I have a couple items, do I have anything else from the council as regards other business?
Hey, Mayor, just again, that's another, sorry about that. That's another time sensitive, I think their deadline's coming up, so if you wouldn't mind signing that today, too, that'd be great.
No, but I'm assuming it was, that's why I came on.
Robert, do you, you want me to mention what you and I talked about, about the training, is it now, or you'll do it later?
Yeah, I'm just gonna have to the mayor, sure.
Door's open. Go ahead.
Sure, council and, and mayor and then, by here. So, the city is, is obviously looking into some changes to the alcohol ordinance and taking a different stance, uh, looking at other ways of kind of addressing the situations and problems. So, one of the ways that I, I, I look to this and what we can do, there's another training. It's like TIPS training, but it's for managers and owners, the licensees. What it does is it enables something called RAF training. It's a training that teaches the licensee how to manage his folks, not just how to manage the customer and what they're supposed to do. And to me, I think that that's, if the city's gonna continue in board, and I think that that's something that, we can write it in the next ordinance, but what I was kind of asking you guys today is I'd like for you guys, or I'd like for council to allow, to kind of continue to seek this out. There's a couple different companies. One's a guy that had planned, and I think William Lord, I've used him in the past. Not trying to take away anything at all from TIPS training, because it's something that you can want them to also do, is to do TIPS training, but this is another way. I'd actually like the city to take, I think, as a licensee, the amount of money that comes in off of your $3,750 license and the other $300,000 coming in off of bottle taxes and excise taxes, I think that's something that we can do to show that we're taking a stand, or taking, to provide the, those people with that information. Um, and at this point, we wouldn't be authorizing anything other than, let's let Robert look into it and see if this is something that we, that we want to do, what kind of cost could be done, what we could find out about it, and if we would at that point. Robert, I guess, wouldn't bring it back to us and say, "This is the, this is the cost according to what the city would tell us for every business to have a licensee plus maybe one manager to come in." And I, and I believe at some point in the new ordinance this will become annuals. That if you're going to have and sell alcohol in the city of State's Pro, your manager, you as an owner, are gonna have to go through training similar to this.
I mean, I had zero issue with Robert looking into that, but wouldn't that be as a part of going through the process of looking at the ordinance and man point parts of the ordinance?
I think so, I, I just, we talked about doing that and having everything done, maybe July or whenever. I would say this could be something we could actually put in place and offer as force on this, if that's something. As you see, I think your, the TIPS training has been increased. This stuff's not talking to the fair. You're slanting, right? All, all busy with the number of people that are coming in as opposed to what it was two months ago. So, obviously, they're out there doing it. And one of the things, I'm not sure that owners, managers are getting that training.
So, what, I, I guess what you're saying, well, why don't we do this? Why, you want to look into it, Robert? And we can incorporate it into discussions that we have over the work sessions over the next two, three, two, four weeks? I'm willing to do that. Is that okay with council? Go for it and look into that. Anything else from council?
Um, I mentioned at the last meeting, Jeff left early. Want to tell you how well he looked on TV, national TV. Well, fit bit, it was such a very good bit. I know it showed up on Sunday night, you can watch on Sunday. It was, it all went very well. I could already tell that you had lost 30 pounds.
Okay, I wanted to say a couple things. One, we got a letter from the Bullitt County Historical Society. It was written to me, and, uh, it was actually CC'd to Robert and Jason Boils and Robert Seamus. And I'd like to read it, says, "The Bullitt County Historical Society would like for you to know how professional the city's Parks Division operates. They have helped us with numerous projects the past four years. Recently, they helped us with our third Tales From the Town Historic Tour. We simply could not do this meaningful project without this group, and the cemetery has never looked better. Our party is a pleasure to work with Al Carte is a pleasure to work with, and he knows how to get a project completed." And at the first of the year, "The Bullock County Historical Society is budgeted to install the missing street signs in our cemetery. We have budgeted fifty-five hundred dollars for this project. We have worked directly with Robert Seamas, and he has kept interim city manager in power. Sincerely yours, Virginia and Frank Waters, Bullock County Historical Society Project Coordinator." So, I just wanna share those two goes with everybody, and secondly, I know that we discussed, I think it was, not unless last city council meeting, but the one prior to that, the concern the council had with what had happened, how the processes apparently, or appeared to break down as it regards bringing infractions in front of this body to be examined, when I say infractions, I mean specifically as it regards the alcohol ordinance for the city of Statesboro. I have asked staff to collect information, and I appreciate the patience of council, because these folks have other jobs within the city, not just collecting information for me to disseminate, but they have diligently done so. And including, um, as it regards helping in that determination as to what happened, but as well as our forthcoming discussions about revising the alcohol ordinance, I also asked the city attorney to prepare and analyze a comprehensive legislative history of the alcohol ordinance to look for trends in the changes made over the years, so we can address those, too. I intend to, to have an overview of what I have found as it regards piecing together the last four or five years or so with how citations or violations came in front of this body and why they seized, and intend to present that overview to council at, at the next council meeting. Y'all have any questions for me, or any direct to from me regarding that? Okay, in that case, I will ask city manager, interim city manager, Robert Teshar, please make his comments.
Thanks, Mayor. I had just, uh, just a few brief items. I wanna remind council, I've sent you a couple of emails to the effect, that we do have a, hoping on the tree board. Uh, we've got one candidate, uh, a very viable candidate, but, um, you could give him more weeks if you have any, know anybody who wants, uh, applications submitted at the meeting on the side of the tree board. Otherwise, I'd like to wait and bring a resolution to the next council meeting for that particular person's argument, that is, through the tree board. But again, if you got any others, certainly could be considered, or just put on the list for if you...
Maybe this, is this somebody that's, um, interested in serving, and the members of the tree board are happy to have them?
Yes.
I saw the email, and I don't have any other suggestions, and that's one of those boards where if you're willing to serve, put them off.
Sure. Yeah, I'll go ahead and put it in a resolution for this council. Thanks. And, of course, we've got a work session right after this meeting to discuss particular revisions to the alcohol ordinance. But also wanted to remind you, uh, at four, four o'clock at November eighteenth, right before the next city council meeting, we'll have a work session where we'll get an update on the South Main Street improvements from that committee, as well as starting the second goals that we discussed at the last meeting, the last council meeting. And then, finally, I'm gonna recognize Jeff Grant, he's gonna give you an update on the fifth bit, and also a couple of SCDB items.
Good morning, council. Um, just a few items real quick. Um, you know, December the fifth is gonna be our downtown Statesboro holiday celebration, so start at five-thirty downtown, in front of City Hall. Mark Firington, uh, George Seven Festival Team will actually be our masters of ceremonies for that event. So, I just wanna encourage everybody to come out for that. Um, also as well, the, uh, Sunbelt Men's Conference, soccer championship's actually gonna be here from November the thirteenth to the sixteenth. Uh, it's gonna be over a hundred and fifty players and coaches, and, uh, over a thousand people actually come out for that event. So, I encourage you, especially, to participate in that event as well. And then this week, um, SCDB is kind of coordinated with the Georgia Association of County Agricultural Agents. They actually have a conference here, over a hundred and seventy-five attendees, so, um, have district meetings, business meetings, presentations, awards, banquets, and industry tours, and, uh, just highlighting that, I'll tell you, I'll bring, I'll update you guys from time to time about what the SCDB is actually involved with, so you guys can pay attention to it. Also, there's some of the items that are, uh, with them, and then, um, I'm also gonna show, if I had second, um, as John had mentioned, the fifth bit program is actually featured on, um, uh, NBC, like, Indian News, New York, uh, probably about two or three weeks ago. So, um, we came down, did about eight hours, or probably six to seven hours of shooting for about two minutes, but, uh, we had a lot of our boys that are involved in it, and it would take five days, so we just, just wanna say thanks to everybody who helped us. Just figuring that, we did want to try to show that, see if I can pull that up, if you can get the lights moving. You're gonna have to go through an affidavit, though, so bear with me. I didn't prepare.
Uh, George, by the CDC.
This is time. The first multi-playing game built in run of Microsoft Azure.
Sorry, this is not for a top teenager.
This cloud turns data into excitement.
This is the Microsoft Cloud. They have become the latest fashion symbol of our digital world as bracelet-like fitness tracking devices are helping millions keep in step with the times and their bodies to a game term with the trend that's getting Americans off the couch and on their feet. When the sun rises in Statesboro, Georgia, fifty-two, Fisher is moving. Three days are measured in steps on her Fitbit Z, Atomica Mobile. She's one of a growing number of Americans who don't personal fitness trackers. And the wearable motion sensor devices like Fitbit, Nike Feel Band, Jawbone, and others measure everything from steps and sleep to heart rate and calorie counts. They sync with smartphones or computers, giving real-time progress reports for better or worse. And I can't, fitness tracking devices are letting me know exactly how long I sit on the couch for. Even fashion designers, who we wish are stepping in on the trend. And the pen and pen, you're the risk, I tell everyone I know. Yeah, God, eventually I think wearable trackers wear it's gone. Jeffrey Quinn is the Director of Human Resources in Statesboro. This summer, the city bought fitness trackers for sixty-three city workers who volunteered for the program. Did you feel like fitness town needed it? Most definitely. Employees have seen it, and having a program like this in place, it really employees moving. Since July, the group's logged more than thirty-two million steps. Uh, well, uh, pretty much. For the fire departments, Lee Cheshire, and Dallas McBean, it's more than personal. Are you checking out your progress from the week? It's a game. Dallas dropped forty pounds, and Lee's tracked up to fifty thousand steps a day. What do you do in order to catch up? The one on brush painting, the one on iron, cigarettes are competitive. Bass got that wet, because you say it's wrong. Four. Experts say that kind of accountability is the key, measuring things in human understanding and the knowledge. And once you know, you can action monitor and have better control. Now, to mention the knowledge that every step matters. Peter and Steve News, Statesboro, Georgia.
What's the war? Uh, currently, we're at, uh, we're close to forty million tips, and, um, over seventeen thousand miles, and over a hundred and twenty-six thousand active visits.
Jeff, that's awesome. All right, our last agenda item, unless there's anything else from you. Like I said, our last agenda item is public comments. Mr. Bill Thomas has asked to make a public comment, and let me remind Mr. Thomas, please, to limit that to two minutes. That's our...
Earlier, when I was addressing, uh, asking about the, the disposition of Mr. Water's case, uh, I thought there were two other cases, and I saw clarification. I didn't hear what you had to say during that time, Mr. Mayor.
I'm on the right side right now. Mr. Thomas, do you have some comments here?
Let me just say, Mayor, that I've extended you a courtesy as mayor, if not for the person in position, and I would expect the same courtesy to be extended to me in the future as a citizen of Statesboro. Thank you. For the last eight years, I've passed for an honest, open, transparent government for the people of Statesboro. Over those eight years, I've addressed the lack of public trust, and the way that you, this board that has elected representatives has conducted business, I could cite many examples, including hostile work environment resulting in huge payouts to former employees. I could talk about felony theft by sworn employees, and, uh, relatively rare, and I could talk about, uh, and I wanna talk specifically about a couple of months ago, Ms. Gadda was in here, and if you didn't have a tear in your eye, you should be ashamed of yourself, but Ms. Gadda was talking about the shape that this city has been allowed to get in and what our board, our elected board, has allowed to have in here. And I think today's kangaroo court is a good example of, of just what she meant by that. I've never seen so many funny things regarding alcohol in my life, Miss Mayor, and the rest of council has, have come before this court just a couple of weeks ago. We had councilman Brett here giving a dissertation about how easy it is to get an alcohol license. And they said, well, all he's got to do is call the eight-hundred number, and say they'll get it to him. I mean, golly. It, it lasts, but we don't have to recognize that way, we just give him a permit. Well, it bothered me that Club One Twenty-Five doesn't even have a kitchen. We don't have bars in Statesboro. We have restaurants that can serve alcohol. However, it didn't bother anybody that we gave an alcohol license to Club One Twenty-Five. I've also noticed, by my inspection, that
Two minutes are up.
One of the former manager, who was responsible in part for the conduct of the people in the club, uh, has submitted an alcohol license to Rio and Blue Grudies as a legacy. And I fully expect that she'll give that to him. It's time for an investigation. I want you, Mayor, to open the, uh, open up for an investigation. Well, you can hold him in his own town, but this is enough, Mayor.
Okay, do I have a consideration of a motion to adjourn this meeting? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn work session will take place in ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
Well, five, hurry back, hurry back, five minutes.